Get enforced, you know, we the officer got a decimal meter and they, you know, go out and they wait their prescribed period of time. And if it's, if it's an infraction, they'll, you know, kind of shut things down and write a ticket. But, um, but that was, that was one of their concerns and then they continue to work at, uh, you know, they're, they're part of a fire authority that's really kind of working with both, uh, Ithaca and Alma to, to reconfigure the, the boundaries in terms of trying to improve response times and and service. And that's been an ongoing thing, but I think it's, it sounds like it's been very collaborative and you know, I think the end result will be that they'll probably, you know, there'll probably be a little different response map when all is said and done, but it'll probably mean that, that people will get, you know, the calls answered faster. So.
So that's the only meeting that I had. Consideration of new business and adoption of department head salary schedule. I don't know if anybody wants to take the lead on this. Terry?
This is last November, the county for the adopted
Could Terry step forward so she can be heard a little better? She's quite echoey from that spot. Give her the podium perhaps. Chuck, that microphone will pick up from several feet away. So.
Okay.
The main thing was just to put it out from under the overhang. Thank you.
Is that better?
Much.
Okay. All right. In November of 2019, the board adopted the class comp study numbers, a revision of those numbers. Since then, we have been creating a salary schedule for the department heads using exhibit three of Mark Notley's numbers with the county's revisions. And what you have in your packet is the result of those numbers. I use the format that we use for the, the TPOAM and the GELC, those salary schedules, and tried to stick as close to the study traditional step system as I could with the numbers that the board adopted. And this is where I landed.
Okay. Any questions for Terry?
Terry, when you look at the pay grade on the scale, you know, one, two, three, four, is that for where these folks are, our people are, or is that is it, that's not what step they're on, or is that, explain that?
That is not their step prior to this study. This is the study step. This is where that put them.
So that, that person like Director of Animal Control would fall in pay grade one?
Yes.
Step, step one then?
Yes, with the new salary schedule.
So he'd be on that row, but what, what would it be? What is his step then?
His step currently is, would be step five, but because the board adopted a different number than what was actually given to us, it, his step is not going to be reflected until he gets his next step increase and then he will fall into an actual step here.
Oh, just that, just that position. So. So these are the, these are the folks that this is for.
Yep.
These, okay. But you don't have, you don't, so like the first one doesn't have a step like the second one, the, the court manager.
Right. It's, it's as close as I could come to putting them in a step. But when their step increases happen on their anniversary dates, then they will fall into an actual step.
I see. So today they're not in a step program type of thing.
Some of them are, some of them are.
I see.
Right. This is kind of like a current time snapshot.
Yep.
But, but that.
This is the implementation awkwardness that will get resolved with the next anniversary dates of some of these folks.
Each employee hits because everybody has a different anniversary.
They get that step on their anniversary date. I don't know certainly. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, in terms of the numbers, this is what, yeah, I've, I've double checked them and it seems like that was what we had come up with back. You know, when we had approved this and then we kind of passed the ball to you to say, all right, take that and turn it into a functional salary schedule. So.
Right. And this is the result of that.
Any other questions for Terry? Or Tracy? Take it from that, I'll take a motion to approve the adoption of the department head's salary schedule.
I'll move.
Motion by Smith.
Support.
Support by Murphy. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is the clerk to call the roll please.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes. Okay. That clearly passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have requests from the treasurer's office. Item K two.
Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me?
I can't see you, but that's okay. We can hear you.
Okay. Um, we lost an employee in our office and, and two weeks ago we have our new person. And Julie brought it to my attention because she's in the union that she can be compensated for cross-training and additional training. And then, so Kelly, of course, feels she should be entitled to it too, as she does immense amount of training, but she is not in the union. So, um, her request has to go in front of the board. So that is what I'm here tonight asking. If they requested a dollar fifty per hour for six months' time. And then since this, since I've got on the agenda, Julie just announced her retirement in two weeks. So she's going to be leaving us. Um, so we won't be compensating her anymore. And then we're going to have another new employee. So that leaves myself and Kelly to do all the training on our own. So I feel Kelly is, um, does qualify for it. I would like her to be compensated for her time because it does pull her away from her own duties. So, and I've talked to Terry and Chris. Terry got me the numbers of what it would be. And I've talked to Chris about, um, fitting it in the budget next year. For Kelly, it's, it's only around $2,000 is all it's going to be. And I can easily come up with that somewhere in my budget.
Right. I, I think you noted, if, if you don't have it in front of you, Michelle noted in her memo that there's currently in excess of about 4,500 in the budget. And so she has that available. Okay. Any questions for Michelle?
So Michelle, in a couple of weeks, they'll be down to two of you there.
Um, I'll still be here. Kelly will be here and then the, the newbie person that's only been here two weeks.
Oh, okay. You've already got somebody else in. Okay. All right.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I'll take a motion to approve the treasurer's request for temporary training compensation for Kelly King.
For how long would that be?
Um, I believe it was six months.
Six months.
Let's start, well.
She was hired November.
Yeah. Okay. That's my, okay. I'll make a motion that we, um, yep, this is King.
Temporary training compensation.
Training, yes.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion by Bunty. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Bunty and support by Murphy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk could call the roll please.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes. That motion clearly passes and that has been approved. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, which is this added item. As again, if you, if you've heard, and I don't want to get into details because it's a public meeting, but, um, our current veterans director has had some health issues. And as a result, he has submitted his resignation and requested that we appoint Sue Edmonds as interim director. And I know he's been working with our administrator for a smooth transition and we wish him the best. But what we need to do right now is, is appoint Sue Edmonds as interim director because we do need someone with that title to continue to process the things like the grant apps and the paperwork that, that needs to be done. You know, they just, they, they need to, to have that title.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Pons Diaz's retirement date is effective September 22nd. So I'm asking that this appointment be effective September 23rd. An addition, if I could, excuse me, but, um, I wanted to get this memorandum out to you. Um, and while I was doing that, I was crunching some numbers. If Ms. Edmonds serves as interim director, it seems only fair that she receive a bump in pay for these additional substantial duties. Her current rate of pay is $19.61 per hour. I'm asking that for the period of time that she serves as interim director, that she be paid at the rate of $21.94. That represents about half time as director duties. So averaging her current salary of 1961 with Rodolfo's current rate as director, landing somewhere in the middle here, which is $21.94 per hour.
Any questions? Okay. Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Sue Edmonds as interim director at the rate that administrator just.
That would be $21.94.
Okay.
I'll move.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Murphy, second by Bunty. Any discussion? And I'm sure as we, we move forward, we'll definitely take the time to recognize Rodolfo for all he's done for the veterans of our county. But for now, and we, we wish him the best. For now, um, we want to make sure that things continue to work in the office and, you know, it's just like Rodolfo, I think he was probably in the hospital when he sent out, he's sending out messages, making sure that things are getting taken care of, which we appreciate. So we've got a motion, support, um, roll call please.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes. That motion clearly passes.
Thank you very much.
At this point, I'll accept a motion to recess the regular meeting and enter into a finance committee meeting of the whole.
I'll move. Support.
A motion by Smith. Support by Murphy. Okay. Roll call please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes. Okay. We are now in our finance committee meeting. We'll start with the financial administrators report. And there's Chris. Hi, Chris.
Good evening. I hope all is well with everybody. Looks, everyone looks healthy and that's, that's what we strive for these days, isn't it?
We had a big bump. We, we, we got a big move in the right direction, Chris.
I assume you are speaking about our cash balances.
Yes.
Yep. Um, now don't get too excited. I did do a little bit of investigation on that. And not surprisingly, we have collected exactly $1.2 million more in general operating taxes by the end of August this year than we did the prior year. So what you're seeing is, is only a timing issue. This tax money would be collected. It's just being collected sooner than it had been in past years. But thank you very much for bringing that up. Outside of that, the, the trends on this table look, uh, very normal. If you have any other questions, be happy to answer them.
I was hoping that'd be like lot of winnings or something like that, but, you know, some windfall, but.
No, gambling is actually one of the items that government agencies are not allowed to do.
We are prohibited from doing that. That's, that's.
Donations and gambling.
Lotto tickets.
Chris, when you look at these, these last, from January 20th or whatever, when you look at the bumps, it looks like, you know, we kind of roll along. We have a couple of big months and then all of a sudden we roll on five, $600,000. When you look at this year here, it seems to be, or last year, excuse me, it seems to be like a little more even. When he had in the bumps, you know, we were all, we were on that seven nine, seven eight, seven two. And here we're, we're running like six two, six seven, but then we'd have a bump of nine. We get it at nine. Just doesn't seem real regular across there, you know? Is that just the, the way the money's coming in or?
There were, you know, several month delays there when the state was shut down and when the county was shut down.
For us for this year?
We were, yes, for this year. There, there was significant delays in getting some of our revenue sharing payments and items like that, grants, grant dispersments. They weren't making those on a timely basis.
I was just looking at like last year. I mean, we really had a couple of big shot months, you know, January and, and September there. And then here just kind of a little more even and we have a three or four big shot months, maybe five, five months. But, okay, that's probably what it is. Thanks.
Yep. No problem.
You know, it, it makes sense. I was, cause it is, it's really uneven. But then I just read something, the IRS just announced that they've been sitting on checks, you know, because they've had, you know, they're like everybody else, you know, they got mail coming in and they haven't even opened envelopes. And so, you know, like if, if.
Matter of fact, there's a thing about if you pay the IRS, don't take the check if they haven't cashed your check yet. Yeah, I seen that today in the news someplace. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
If you pay the IRS, like you owe the money or you do your portal estimates or whatever it is, and they've not cashed your check for the last four or five months, don't add it back in your checkbook.
It's gonna cash.
Sitting somewhere. That's.
Sitting somewhere. Yep. And, and, and they, I, I think they're actually saying that, that they're, they're going to forgive people if, 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 when they finally cast a check, the check bounces, you know, because normally that's another penalty, but it's kind of like, well, we get it, you know, you, you know, you're not reconciling your checkbook like you're supposed to and you're just going off your statement and you're saying, oh, I got more money than I thought. And all of a sudden, wham. And so. So I, I think everybody's, I think everybody's in that boat right now. So. Chris, anything interesting in the checks over $10,000 that we need to know about? Does anyone have any questions about checks over $10,000?
I have a question.
Okay.
We have the bond that we pay for that, that we gave to MERS. I never see it in here. How come?
It actually was paid this month. And I have it highlighted on, on the screen right now to Huntington National Bank.
That's the big check to Huntington.
Huntington. Okay.
It's not made up to the state. It's.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And you'll see sometimes some of the attorneys, they, they hold, uh, they, they don't bill out on a regular basis. So if you see an attorney that's getting a large check like I have up on the screen, all those individual small amounts are each of his individual billing. So he or she might hold them for a couple of months before submitting them. But, uh, you know, once it gets close to year end, 9:30, we start reminding them they need to get those in. So that's what you're seeing here.
What is that, what is that he's doing for us or for whoever? Is, is Ryan?
He's an attorney at the courthouse.
So he's one of the attorneys on the rotation for when we can't afford an attorney, we provide them one.
Wow. Does he work in here?
Yeah, some attorneys don't do that.
Yeah, I was surprised.
Meant to have attorneys that do, but.
And then I have a couple of other questions.
Yes.
I'm on page nine. Am I too far ahead of yous? No, you got it up there. Um, what about Wanzie Tree? You have them down here twice. Did you make a mistake?
How much was that check for?
We got two of them, $21,800, then $21,800.
First one has a, a V next to it. That means that was voided.
I don't see that.
The first payment was voided. So the second payment went out a week later.
Where would the V be at?
Right by it.
It's right by the amount on the right hand side.
Oh, I see it. I see it. Okay. Sorry.
So actually what they did is they, they closed down their old bank account, opened a new one and then up the date, their ACH form with us. So that's why we voided the first one.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually used to have a lot more of those on the register because we were printing more checks. And so you just get, you know, bad, you know, printer wood. And we'd have to void it.
But I'd like to say that that is the exact type of thing that you should look for is two payments for the exact amount to the same person because, um, it is sometimes a sign that you need to look at something closer or ask a question. That's a, that's a very good question, Jan.
Well, thank you. I try to find good questions.
We had, there's a couple, there was one in there that I had to look at because it was, we had two of the same payment, exact same payment. They're right next to each other. And one wasn't voided and like, but it was a different date. And I'm sure, I assume it was a recurring payment because they were like a week apart.
Okay. I have a couple more questions on page 12. What is Air Spring Incorporated? And that's two of them, but there's no V next to it for 38822.
Two different dates.
Do you see it, Chris?
I do. Yep. I just need to punch it in the computer real quick. That is, uh, the Central Dispatch Emergency Operations Center phone bill.
Okay. And then one other question, the, the, your fleet car program. What are those?
That's gas.
That's gas? Okay.
The fuel.
There's notice in several checks for a hundred dollars and cents.
That was a, I think I got one and I, at first I thought, huh, I believe that's the return of our.
The bond. Okay. Yep.
Now that's my money. I'm just getting it back.
Happy to hold any of it for you, Mr. Lambert.
Yeah. And, and obviously, you know, you didn't invest it for me and, and double it.
He buried it.
Yeah. Didn't take it, didn't take it to the casino and double it. So.
You get the bond back, uh, if you win the primary. Is that how that works? Four seconds.
Okay. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to the, or Chris, is there anything else before I move on to the treasurer's report? Or does anyone have any questions for Chris before we move on?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Hearing none. Um, Michelle, I can't tell if, Michelle, I can't see who's here or not. Is?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. Um, I've provided you with the same three reports that I do monthly. The receipt listing, the bank transfers and the investment report. Um, there were no new investments this month. The receipts we received, we had 445 transactions through our office last month, um, taking in almost five and a half million. So does anybody have any questions on any of the receipts of the funds that we received it in?
Any questions on those from Michelle?
Questions?
You know, a couple of those old investments are looking awfully good right now, aren't they? It's, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's scramble to get point four, point five, but it is what it is.
Yeah.
Page that says commercial thing, what is that? The page 27. Online banking commercial.
Oh, yeah. That's, um, when we have to transfer money from one bank account to another. Row commission money comes into our fund account. So we have to transfer that out monthly to their own bank account. And then all the rest of them are flex and insurance claims because they each have their own banking account as well.
Any other question? Excuse me. Any other questions for Michelle on the treasurer's report? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you, Michelle.
All right. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. We'll go on to budget adjustments. Chris, I'm going to pass that back to you.
Yep. I'm going to bring it up on the screen here in just a second. So these are actually budget amendments. There is a legal definition difference between an amendment and an adjustment.
Sorry. Excuse me. I couldn't get back to my page in time, so I just made it up.
No, no problem. Um, amendments are required to be passed by the board before the end of the fiscal year, which is September 30th. You need to make an amendment in order to not spend more money in a specific department or a fund than what you guys have originally passed as a budget. It's actually against the law to go over budget without the board approving it and creating an amendment. So what I'm bringing before you is our current year budget amendments that need to be made. There's two pages here. The first one that you're looking at is, uh, the general fund where I have it labeled as just departments. So we have the different departments. You see administration, buildings and grounds, drains. These are the amounts that I'm asking to increase. In the second column here, I gave a quick reason why. Were you made aware of this throughout the year? Cause some of these you have been made aware of. For example, administration, we need to increase $25,000 because the janitorial staff were made full time during the fiscal year after you passed the original budget. Yes, you were aware of this because you voted to increase expenditures throughout the year to make them. So how are we going to pay for this is my next column that I put in here, department to decrease. What we're going to do is pull that out of our contingency. We'll decrease contingency $25,000. If we weren't going to decrease another expenditure, another option would be having an offsetting revenue, which that is also a good thing. If you're going to increase expenditures somewhere, you want it, your, your best options are to decrease some somewhere or have a extra revenue coming in that'll pay for it. For example, a grant. We'll get into that in a little bit. The last option would be to pull it from fund balance, which means we don't have another way to pay for it except for our savings. And then here I'm giving an, an explanation. The explanation for the janitorial staff was simply they had pay raises and we added benefits. They didn't have benefits before and now they do. So for the general fund, I'm going to now go to the summary to let you know overall what I'm trying to change in the general fund. That's down here at the bottom. I'm asking to increase expenditures by $391,000 in certain departments. Decrease expenditures in other departments for $201,000. Increase revenue. Increase revenue for certain departments for approximately $43,000. That leaves $147,000 where we're not offsetting it somewhere. Of that, $5,000 is restricted funds for MSU Extension, $15,000 for Liquor Law Enforcement Fund. It was a restricted, we can't spend it on anything else. They have their own mini fund balances in our General Fund. So I'm asking in this is an overall increase in expenditures for $127,000. And this is related to the purchase of South Annex and what I did not include on there. It also includes the repairs for North Annex, too. Now, a lot of those repairs, we were able to absorb in the budget based on moving money around, but this is the amount that I'm unable to move around, which would have to come from our fund balance from... So in theory, that's what I'm doing throughout this entire document. Now I can run through each line. You can ask questions about each line, but I'd like to focus on this General Fund page before we go to the next one. Our very last row here, increasing appropriations to other funds. Appropriations to other funds includes the Capital Project Fund. The building and the repairs for the building at North and South Annex, those were all recorded in the Capital Projects Fund. And here you see the increased amount, $127,000, which matches what is not being offset with a movement that is within this spreadsheet. You will also see this is the only amount, $127,000, that falls underneath this fund balance column, which means it would be coming from our savings. Be happy to ask, answer any questions or go over anything else in more detail. If you'd like me to go over in more detail, please let me know. But I think this gives you a pretty good idea of what I'm trying to do here.
I do have a few questions.
You bet.
Okay, down at the bottom, I can barely see it on mine, so. On the very bottom, is that the place that we bought across the street?
France.
27. Okay, how much was that? Was it 100, did we buy it for 127,000?
We did not. Like I said, that number also includes all the renovations that we've had to do to that South Annex after it was purchased. And it also has to do with the mold cleanup expenses that were not budgeted for because we didn't know we had that problem.
Yeah.
Of the North Annex.
Yeah, how much did we pay for the house? I can't remember.
80,000.
80,000?
80,000.
Out of 80.
Under 90, I know. I think it was under 90, it was 80, 85,000.
So we paid 80,000?
80, 85, I think it was.
80, 85. Okay. I just couldn't remember. It's hard to see on this screen here. And then also, if you head down here, MSU will need to spend 5,000 more of their, can't read the rest. I need my glass.
The one you can't touch.
MSU will need to spend 5,000 more of their restricted millage funds this year than what was budgeted.
What will they spend that for?
General Operations. I believe they did some office... They did some repairs to the office there and they rearranged some offices. And they do, like I said, they have a specific millage that has, that only MSU Extension can spend that tax money collected. And they do have a fund balance in there to do that.
Okay.
So it's not pulling money from unrestricted General Fund dollars per se.
Okay, and then also your liquor law enforcement. That's 15, spending down. So where is that money going?
The sheriff used that money in accordance with the law and how his, the liquor law enforcement money that we get from the state of Michigan allows him to do that. So when we find expenses that he can use this money from the state to purchase stuff with, we do that instead of using our general operating taxes that we collect.
That's a good idea.
Like an example of PBT, portable breath test, or something that assists the guys with liquor law enforcement, we can purchase out of that.
Oh, okay. That's a good idea.
It's restricted money.
And we want, and we want to spend all that.
Yeah, we spend it all.
So that's what the sheriff works with, Chris, to make sure that they spend it all before we start spending our money.
Yep.
Exactly.
Yeah, and that building was just over 90,000. I just found it.
90,000?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions on the amendments? Chris, anything else you want to add?
I'd like to roll down to the Special Revenue and Other Funds because just to go over those with you real quick because they'll need to be part of a motion that you would have to pass these. From the other fund amendments, what we're looking at here, we're looking at, needing to increase the budget that we're holding for the road commission. Now, we just maintain their books, but I try to stay in compliance as much as possible. Their revenues coming in this year are significantly higher than what they're expecting. So I'd like to increase their expenditures by 1.5 million and offset that with an increase of revenue by 1.5 million. It's just based on, you know, how many projects they're able to get in this year. The end of last year was not a good year for construction because of the weather. It was so wet and so flooded. You'll see that in the next one also. So a lot of those projects carried over into our current parts and rep. We need to increase their budget $20,000 because of a project that was approved last year wasn't able to get fixed or finished until this year. So they were under budget last year significantly because the pavement project hadn't been paid for. But then we got to pay for it this year, which we weren't expecting to when we passed the budget. Outside of that, we're looking at the Library Fund. Everything here has a fund balance that they are able to spend this down on. Or there's going to be an offsetting revenue. So if you have any questions, please ask.
Library Fund, is that for here?
That is, that is the Special Revenue Fund that holds the Library Millage. So anything that we collect in there?
That's for the village.
Yeah, anything we collect in there, we want to distribute.
Okay.
Just briefly, the wind farm planning is just basically to see how we kind of wash out when we get this thing settled up with these. Where we're going to be at, we have to pay money back or whatever these, how far they decide the depreciation schedule goes down on those.
That is actually, that's not our money. We are holding that for one of the wind farms. In fact, you provided me quite a bit of information about this when I presented it several months ago. One of the wind farms is paying for all the engineering fees.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
And that such, and that's what this is.
Yeah.
Because we created this fund this year, it didn't have a budget. So what I'm asking is to create it.
You got to create it.
That's right, for a couple of townships. But wasn't we talking about doing something with, if we're going to have any obligation on the timing of this lawsuit settles up with these wind farms that we owe money back to them possibly? Was we looking at doing anything with that?
If we, if we do not prevail in that litigation, I mean, when the thing ends, which could be, you know, who knows? If we are required to pay anything back, then we would talk about where that comes from. As it is, we do have a, you know, end balance and maybe we would tap into that. We also just don't know what the possible, what the liability would be. So we have not opted to set aside money and place it in a specific fund. Yeah, so we're not there.
I think there'll be a lot of communities probably not setting as well as we are if that happens, if they want it back today.
I think local communities are going to be hurting quite a bit.
That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions for Chris? If none, what we'll do is we'll approve the budget amendments when we go back into the regular board meeting. We'll approve the bills as part of the motion to get us back into that regular meeting. The final thing on the agenda is brief public comments, and I can't tell if there's anybody out there. Is there anybody out there?
I'm not seeing anyone, anyone making public comment at this time.
Very good. And at this point, I'll take a motion to adjourn the Finance Full Board Meeting and return to the regular Commission Meeting for the purpose of paying the bills.
So... Support.
Motion by Smith, second by Murphy. If the clerk could call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes. That motion clearly passes. We return now to the regular Commission Meeting. And at this point, I'll take a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
So... Support.
Motion by Smith, second by Murphy. Any discussion? Hearing none, if the clerk could please call the roll.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes. It clearly passes. And we're at the end of our agenda, Board Comments.
Just a, just a heads up, my, my mom's doing a lot better and I'll be back by the end of the month.
Good. Safe travels, George.
Yep.
Good to hear, good to hear.
Do we have any public comment now?
I'm not seeing anyone else joined.
Okay, if not, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Yeah, thanks, everybody.
The roll call in there.
You know, actually...
I'm just kidding, I just...
It's funny, I said something about it, I think at one point to George, and I looked it up and actually, once the, the agenda is exhausted, the Chair can just immediately gavel is done.